So, as I usually do before I start the meeting and was not successful last week, if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. We may have to start some sort of a penalty jar. So, I'm gonna call the work session of the Oregon City Commission to order for Tuesday, August 11th, 2015.
Commissioner Shaw is excused absence this evening. Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. So, does anybody have future agenda items that you want to put on the work session?
No.
The one thing I have is I want to have an update on what's going on with the Buena Vista House. I drove by there today and was tempted to just toss a road flare in on my way by, so...
How about not?
Well, it's a little too dry for that, but...
That would be a good agenda item.
So, without anything on the...yeah, so there's that, and then let's go to discussion items 15, 455. The Irma Tinger House Strategic Plan. Community Services Director, Mr. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. So, tonight, the item before you is some discussion about the strategic plan for the Irma Tinger House. As you know, we have been working diligently on completing the renovation of the house, and I'm happy to report that we are very near the end of that process. We're just getting some kind of final punch list items done with the contractor, both inside and outside, just sort of minor things.
Like landscaping?
And the landscaping is gonna be the last thing. We're actually gonna be...the contractor's gonna be installing sod as soon as the weather cools down, whenever that might be, but that's actually probably gonna be maybe the very last thing. We had some landscaping help this past weekend from Mr. and Mrs. Harding, as well as, I think, some of the other supporters and friends of the Irma Tinger House, so it was a big help. They just volunteered to...they said, "If you guys put some weed dumpsters out, some landscape dumpsters out, we'll go out and weed the lawn for you," which wasn't necessary, but they wanted to do that, so we thanked them for that. But yes, we're very near the end of the renovation, so then that brings us to the next big step. We're gonna talk more at some point with the Commission, too, about a kind of a grand opening celebration. We'll be working on that as we complete the house. But really, the big issue before us is, of course, now that we're completing the house, what do we do? What does it look like? How is it programmed and so forth? And so, in that line of planning, we were fortunate, since we are a heritage all-star community, we received a non-competitive grant from the Oregon Cultural Trust, basically through kind of SHIPO is sort of all tied in there, a small grant to do a programming study. So, with that grant funding, we hired Architectural Resources Group, ARG, which is also happens to be the firm...happens to be the same firm that did all the architectural work on the house for us. And specifically, one of the principals of that firm, Matt Davis, who's here this evening, and actually, Matt, you can kind of start coming on up to the present table while Matt's coming up. Matt is a...basically, a historical architectural planner, and I'm probably saying that wrong, but specializes in this type of work for ARG. And the three...basically, the three main questions or components that we ask to focus on in terms of the ongoing preservation and operation of the house are, one, how should the house be managed and what governance structure should be in place in order to be successful? Two, how should the Irma Tinger House be interpreted and programmed? And three, what immediate next steps should we take now that the rehabilitation of the house is just about complete? And so, over the last few months or so, Matt has taken that...that's been his work plan is to help us answer some of those questions. There's a draft strategic plan, which is part of your agenda packet, and you have access to that through that. Should you want a hard copy of that, please let me know. We can make that available to you. And what Matt is going to do in the next about 10 to 12 minutes or so is gonna run through that summary of that...it's about a 50-plus-page report, but he's gonna summarize that for you, and then we'll leave some time to answer any questions that you might have and any further discussion. So, the purpose tonight is to hear the report and then to have any discussion about that, and then we certainly welcome the feedback of the Commission to begin to pursue those answers to those questions. So, with that, I'm gonna just turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Yes, so, basically, to ground our discussions this evening, I want to give a 10-minute overview of the report you have in front of you, and then we can go back and visit any issues of particular interest to the Commission. Scott just walked through the three main questions that guided the report. The one thing I want to emphasize is that the purpose of the report was really to look at the Irma Tinger House as a house museum. This wasn't a use assessment where we were looking at a wide variety of potential uses for the building. The central question really was, what steps are necessary? What does it take? What will it take to make the Irma Tinger House Museum a long-term, sustainable house museum? So, that was the focus. In terms of methodology, you can sort of think of these as the three ingredients that went into the report. There was some general research on house museums, which I'll say a bit more on in a minute. There was a series of case studies, which I'll visit briefly, and lots and lots of stakeholder interviews. So, let me say a little bit about house museums first. There's a discussion at the front...towards the front of the report that you have about some of the challenges facing house museums today nationwide. And there's a lot that could be said about this, but really, the main thing to understand is that there are three main challenges facing house museums. First, you know, how to mobilize sufficient funds to support ongoing operation; how to mobilize sufficient personnel to support ongoing operation, whether they be paid staff, volunteers, whoever it is. And then, thirdly, how to mobilize sufficient funds to support ongoing maintenance and repair. In this case, that's a little bit of a lower priority because the rehabilitation is coming to a close. That's often the real stumbling block for a house museum, how to accomplish the major rehab. That's been done in this case, which is a fantastic situation to be in. Now, before getting into some of the recommendations, I just wanted to take a couple slides here to very quickly remind folks of the history of the Irma Tinger House. The house was built in 1844, and it's a two-story Greek Revival House. It's one of the oldest surviving structures in Oregon. Now, in addition to this architectural rarity, it's historically important for its association with Hudson's Bay Company as the home of HBC Chief Trader Francis Irma Tinger, who was also treasurer of Oregon's provisional government. So, you have a lot of historical significance there. It's also associated with the naming of the city of Portland as the reputed site of the series of coin tosses between Lovejoy and Pettigrove in 1845.
Do we not know that that's true?
We're pretty sure, I would say.
It happened in a house in Oregon City. That's what we know. And there was only a few houses here.
And Bill Hawkins has some good information about it, too. And no one else has claimed that their house is the house, most importantly.
Exactly. Right.
So, yes. So, again, the house is significant, both architecturally and historically. It was relocated the first time in 1910, around the same time that the McLaughlin House was relocated in 1977. It was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Moved again in 1986 to its current location and became a City of Oregon city property in 1996. Now, in the decade or so, maybe more like 15 years preceding the rehabilitation, the house was the Francis Irma Tinger House Textile and Living History Museum, and during this period, it was operated on behalf of Parks and Rec by volunteer staff, many of whom are here today. And during that period, the house featured exhibits focused on Victorian-era clothing and textiles and hosted regular special events, including Victorian sewing workshops, living history teas, and ghost tours. The events featured extensive first-person storytelling by living historians in period dress. And I wanted to just lay that out there because I think one of the things that was important about that period was the emphasis on events and activities, and I think that's the real challenge with a house museum is if it's just a static display, it can be the most historically sensitive display ever conceived. You're not gonna bring return visitors if you're not offering varied programming. And finally, just a word about the rehabilitation, which began in late 2011 and will be completed very soon. It was a multifaceted project, involved roof replacement, seismic upgrades, mechanical upgrades, electrical upgrades, a lot of ADA-related accessibility improvements, and a whole slew of rehabilitation and conservation measures. I mentioned that we did some interviews, and you know, the strategic plan really draws on the insights and guidance of a wide variety of key stakeholders. And this included city staff, the Irma Tinger Friends Group itself, lots of other local heritage groups, and the National Park Service folks over at Fort Vancouver also offered some valuable insights. Now, I'm not...I can't...I don't have the time right now to sort of march through each of these three case studies in any great detail, but I just wanted to say a word about why each one was included. The purpose was to identify case studies that involved other small house museums of similar vintage in the Pacific Northwest, in smaller towns in the Pacific Northwest, that might offer important lessons either regarding governance and management or interpretation and programming, or both. So, the Olympia example was an interesting case because it's a situation where a house museum recently merged with the local Historical Society after both had been around for a little while. And so, the report talks about the benefits deriving from that merger, some of which are very relevant to the Oregon City Irma Tinger case. The Montieth House in Albany, it's owned by the city of Albany but operated by the Montieth Historical Society, and that proved a very useful case study because that relationship is sort of going...in the process of being more formalized. The Historical Society has operated the house for decades, but it's not really formally codified, so the city is going through the process of making it formal. At the same time, the Historical Society itself is going through the process of sort of becoming a more formalized nonprofit entity with an active board and, you know...and you see, a lot of the material we got from Montieth is included as an appendix that should be useful reference. And then finally, the Rothschild House in Port Townsend, another interesting case of sort of co-management because it is managed by the local Historical Society, the Jefferson County Historical Society, on behalf of Washington State Parks. And we can certainly come back to any of those case studies if you'd like later on. And so, based on these case studies and interviews and the general understanding of the plight of historic house museums, you know, we conclude the report with a series of recommendations that generally fall into these five categories you see here. Tonight, I'm gonna focus mainly on the first one and the third one, define the governance structure and develop an interpretive plan, because in some ways, those are the most So, recommendation number one, define governance structure. So, you know, longer term, we recommend that the city of Oregon City definitely keep open the option that the Irma Tinger House be absorbed into the Oregon City unit of the Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, as have the McLaughlin House and Barclay Houses already. I mean, that's a natural place for the house to end up, given the shared history, shared location. But that longer-term sort of conviction aside, there's a more immediate need to formalize the management approach to the Irma Tinger House Museum in a couple ways. And you know, first, there really needs to be a formal written agreement between the city and a nonprofit who's charged with managing the house. And you know, this agreement needs to clearly spell out how responsibilities are divided between the city and the nonprofit, somewhat like the End of the Oregon Trail agreement that you already have. You know, typically, in these kinds of arrangements, I mean, based on the case studies and some other case studies we didn't get into, it didn't include in the report, you know, usually the city takes on ongoing maintenance, larger capital improvements, if they're necessary. I don't think they would be in this case, whereas the managing nonprofit deals with day-to-day operation and programming. And in some cases, in the Montieth case, they take care of sort of simpler maintenance issues. That kind of depends on the capacity of the local group. Now, that's one way in which there needs to be sort of more formalization. And the other way is that this nonprofit managing entity, whatever it may be, itself needs to become more formalized. You know, there are many forms this nonprofit could take, but we recommend, you know, given that we want to deal with existing conditions and work with the assets we already have, you know, we recommend that this nonprofit management entity either be a standalone Irma Tinger House Friends Group or a newly constituted committee of the McLaughlin Memorial Association that is expressly charged with operating the Irma Tinger House. And I want to talk about that second recommendation first. So, our recommendation that we see in the report is that, you know, we recommend that the existing informal Friends Group discuss some sort of potential merger with MMA. I mean, there are a lot of reasons for this. There is almost total overlap in membership, for starters. The houses themselves have a very closely shared history. And then, as is highlighted in some of the case studies, there are some real economies of scale that could be achieved potentially through a merger, whether it be mundane things like purchasing supplies or more elaborate, like joint marketing efforts or shared staff, as well as increased volunteer capacity and broader tourist appeal through sort of more tightly unified tourist program, if you will. I want to point out, too, that a sort of merged...a merged approach would also likely be more appealing to the National Park Service because they already have an established relationship with McLaughlin. And the idea that acquisition of the house down the road wouldn't require establishment of a new relationship with a new entity, that would be appealing to the National Park Service, no doubt. Now, and we do say this in the report, I want to emphasize it here, that this directs...you know, within this domain of talking about some sort of kind of merged entity, I think it's very important that Irma Tinger be kept as a separate committee in order to maintain the house's distinct identity. I mean, one of the things that came out in some of the stakeholder meetings, and I agree with, is that the desire was not to have Irma Tinger inadvertently wind up being another Barclay House where it's sort of a support structure, although, you know, historically appreciated not, you know, not as out on its own as Irma Tinger has been the last 20 years. Now, and then, as we say in the report, we recognize that such a merger may be deemed impossible or inadvisable or just not the route that the city wants to take or that, you know, the folks who are really invested in the house's future want to take. And then, in that case, you know, if merger's not the route the folks want to go, the report offers a whole series of recommendations for the Irma Tinger Friends Group itself and identifies, in particular, a series of documents that should be developed in support of the group's formal incorporation. I mean, it's not just a matter of becoming a formal 501(c)(3). There's a whole slew of things to really, really formalize that group as a management entity. And again, most of those are drawn from the Montieth example. Very quickly, I said we wouldn't say much about...the second recommendation was...this was broken out as a recommendation because it's so immediate that, you know, the rehabilitation is nearly completed. There are a few outstanding items that will need to be addressed after the rehabilitation. Primarily, there's the outstanding issue of selecting and installing historically appropriate wallpaper, which we discuss a little bit in the report. There's also the secondary issue of developing a furnishing plan, which, in the report, this is really discussed as part of recommendation number three, because the furnishing plan is really part and parcel of the overall interpretive plan for the building. What I want to say about the interpretive plan is that, you know, one of the primary objectives for the nonprofit entity charged with interpreting and programming the house is to develop an interpretive plan, that, you know, that this plan is an essential reference that defines the museum's mission and identity, the interpretive scope and content, and the programmatic approach. So, I'm not going to repeat the language on the slide. I just want to mention some of the key questions that go into this kind of plan. So, under identity, you know, the goal, and I know we have...some of this already exists, but the goal is really to have a mission statement that answers some key questions. What is the purpose of the museum? Why should people be interested in visiting the museum? And why should donors be interested in funding activities at the museum? And then, you know, similarly, you have a whole host of questions that you need to address regarding the content of the museum. What portions of the building should be open to the public? You know, what's the period of significance that's the basis...that should be the basis for interpretation? And we have recommendations for all these questions in the report, which we can come back to, certainly. You know, what furnishings and artifacts should be displayed and how will they be exhibited? And just as important, how will existing artifacts that aren't on display be inventoried and, you know, sort of collated and kept track of? And what's the policy for acquisition of new artifacts? And what share of the space will accommodate rotating exhibits versus permanent display? Move on to the recommendation number four was to develop a fundraising plan, which, again, I think this is something that the nonprofit managing entity often takes the lead on, but certainly, the city can play a role as well. And the idea here is to lay out a plan that identifies an approach to keeping the house financially solvent. And I think that this starts with market research, you know, to understand local tourism trends in order to develop the second bullet here, to really develop an understanding of what are reasonable expectations for what portion of the house's budget should come from earned income versus government funds versus private donations. And once you have that understanding of how that could be funded, then you begin to craft your short and long-term fundraising strategies appropriately. And then, the last thing I'll say, we do say a little bit, very little bit, in the plan about developing a maintenance plan for the building, which, again, is a longer-term need because we are just wrapping up this rehabilitation, but we did include some of the checklist that we created for use at Fort Vancouver. And really, particularly in this case, when you have a fairly modestly-sized building, it's about very frequent and systematic monitoring of building conditions, so you get ahead of any condition issues. So, with that, you know, I would say that Scott and I welcome any questions or comments you want to share with us at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to start with Scott, and I'm a little late to the game on this one, but I just want to be sure that we dealt with the foundation issue. We dug up all the old stuff and filled in the hole correctly and all that, so we're not gonna have any issues with that going down the road, right?
Yes.
Okay. And how long do we...David?
Yes.
I just wanted you...how long do we expect to have the house as the city before we work out some kind of a deal to transfer it to the Park Service?
Scott has been...Scott has been talking to them for years, I know, but I think part of this depends on, frankly, the federal budget and whether or not the Park Service's...I know, once upon a time, here in Oregon City, they were anxious to purchase the house, so I think it's still an asset that they value that way. I think it's just a budgetary concern.
So, I mean, if we were being conservative about that, are we talking five years, 10 years?
I would say 10.
10?
It's definitely a longer-term approach.
Okay.
In our meetings with the National Park Service, while, and what David said is absolutely correct, it comes down to basically money. The other piece of it is if we were to be able to do similarly to what we did with the McLaughlin House several years ago, it would actually require legislation at the federal level. So, it's a pretty significant process. It would require some, I think, some significant lobbying of our position to our represented officials in order to pursue that. And, you know, the Park Service has reminded us, we value your partnership. We very much, you know, they really do appreciate working with the city, but it's...they're not hesitant to say, "You know that you had the chance to do this before and you didn't, so we're going to approach that cautiously." And they don't mean that in a caustic way or anything, but just that it is a very big process, so, yeah.
Okay, well, and I had a reason for going down this road. So, as far as a maintenance issue, I don't want to be in this spot again. So, I think that from a maintenance standpoint, we ought to budget, I don't know what the number is, $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 a year, and just put it in a maintenance fund for the house, because we know in the next probably five years, there's probably not much of anything to do.
Well, Mayor, we want to do more than put it in a fund. I mean, I think that's a point, but we also want to do the maintenance. So, we don't get into a situat...we want to take good care of this, because it costs a lot of money to get it back to this condition.
Right.
So, you know, I think there were decades and decades of decay that happened probably before any of us were here, frankly, but I think we have a huge responsibility now to make sure that we budget for proper degrees of maintenance every year. And if you're suggesting we budget an amount over and above that for another big project like this, then we can...
Well, I think you need to, you know, we need to take care of the ongoing maintenance on a year-to-year basis, but I think you need to start putting some money aside, you know, as a fund, so that when, you know...
Replace the fund.
It's time to replace the roof or, you know, something else happens, we have that pot of money to go to, and we don't have to take it out of the general fund to do it all at once. Anybody else?
A question for Scott. Is the long-term goal to...for the city to divest ownership of this house and the maintenance responsibility of it, and therefore, the purchase price from the National Park Service or some other entities maybe less important than the fact that we're not...we would no longer have this maintenance responsibility?
Correct. That's my understanding of our current position, and that, yeah, I'm not sure that a purchase would be in order...if we were asking them to take on a liability of sorts, so, yeah. So, it would be, yeah, a nominal fee or something, probably, but...
A dollar or more.
Well, 'cause, let's face it, it's not worth the money we put into it. You could have built four houses that size for the amount of money we put into it. Now, understanding, I fully support all the historic value and all that, but, you know, to try to think that we're going to get back our investment in dollars is unreasonable.
Yeah, more so, the value would be in ensuring its long-term protection and preservation and interpretation is really the goal, and that the National Park Service does that for a living, and that's what they do, and they do it well when they take something on, but they have to say yes, so that's the big key for us.
One thing I want to throw out there, one additional detail that was interesting when we were talking with National Park Service is that you'd mentioned before that these things typically require sort of, you know, legislation of some type. They were kicking around the idea, and this would bear further examination, that if it were a boundary change to the Oregon City unit, then that wouldn't necessarily require legislation. So, that could be a simpler process.
Yes, that's correct.
A boundary change, I'm confused.
Like, if instead of establishing a new locale for Fort Vancouver National Historic Site, instead, they have the existing Oregon City unit, which includes McLaughlin and Barclay. If they were simply adjusting the boundary of that unit, that doesn't require legislation.
So, can you adjust the boundary to include an island?
Well, that was the question. I had to look into that. It's like, well, at what point does a boundary adjustment become something far more?
Right.
It's a good question.
Is at some point, there also an interest in discussion with the National Parks Service for the house that's adjacent, which is also historic, I'm not familiar with?
Stephen Crawford's house.
I can't really speak to that. That isn't under the city's jurisdiction, so I'd be hesitant to say so. I think that's the...
Which one of the only dozen or so historic organizations owns the Stephen Crawford?
Clockmouth County Historical Society, correct? Yeah.
Yeah. There's no interest.
No. I doubt it.
So, Mayor, I've asked Mr. Archer to continue meeting with the Park Service and also to set up meetings at the appropriate time when they're ready.
and also to set up a meetings at the appropriate time when they're ready for you and/or I to join him in those meetings to try to make the case. So, I think we're just trying to wait for, for when you get the feedback that it's the right time.
Okay.
And I think also, we probably have a lot of people in the community that would be supportive and write letters of support and, for that, because it's a, it's a big investment and it's a big part of our history.
So, go ahead. Well, just to tag on to that, a very important aspect to that is, one, first of all, they wanted, they wanted us to complete the restoration. They didn't want to inherit, they didn't want to inherit that. Secondly, they very much, and Matt and I had a couple of recent meetings through this process, made it very clear that for this to work and for them to even have it as a consideration, they would want in place a foundation or a Friends Group or the nonprofit that he's mentioned throughout the report numerous times. So, that, getting that established, getting it working, getting it producing, you know, volunteers and donations and so forth is a big part of that sell to them as well, so.
Commissioner Smith?
So, I agree with the, I mean, the city commission, not necessarily the city commission, but the city itself and even the Friends Group for a long time has, has been vocal about its interest in eventually seeing National Parks take the house over. It's something we've been talking about for 10 years or more. So, I think in the long term, that's the greatest, you know, protection of the house, but I do think it's going to take some time to do that. I know they wanted the house restored, but it was also my insistence not to work towards giving them the house until it was restored, because I felt very strongly that it was the city's responsibility to do that and to maintain the house and restore it. What I want to just kind of share with you a little bit now is, is there's a huge group in the audience that have been very strong advocates for the house, very committed volunteers for the house for the last 20 years, who I kept telling year after year, don't give up, we will get this done someday. And now we have. But that now leads us with another step. So, I want you to know that they're prepared for this next step. And, and so, when it comes to this plan, the strategic plan definitely gives the Friends Group some pointers and some, some advice on where to go from here. I think some of these things have already been tackled. And one of the things that I'm curious about, you talked a little bit about, you know, the planning of the grand opening. I don't think any plans have been made yet.
No, no, just that that's one of the next steps.
So, I think that discussion, I don't want to discuss about the details of the grand opening, but I think, to me, the real importance of that grand opening is as much as we want it to happen as soon as possible. We also want to make sure that that is a kickoff to fundraising and the building of the strength of this Friends Group. So, that if that means, you know, delaying the grand opening, you know, a little longer so that that's in place, I think, personally, I think that's important.
I agree.
I know that the Friends Group of the Erma Tinger House has discussed possible mergers with MMA. I don't necessarily think that's realistic, and they could share that at later times to why they don't think that might be realistic. I think part of my concern with that was the identity of the Erma Tinger House itself, which was already talked about. But I do think that the Friends Group, I know that the Friends Group is formalizing in an official way. I know that they're working on their bylaws. I know that they're working on all the things that have been pointed out in here. I could see them coming forward hopefully in the next couple of months with a proposal. I would hope that would be the case to this commission to give us an idea of what their plan is. It may not be a full plan. It may not include a full interpretive plan or a full fundraising plan or any of those things, but those are definitely things that have been discussed and will be working on. So, I think this lays the groundwork for a real possibility for a Friends Group to make a proposal to the city and then have us create hopefully some sort of agreement that matches or closely similar to the agreement that CHP has with the city. And I think that's good. The only real concerns that I have prior to the opening is making sure that we're all aligned to come up with a fundraising plan, like I said, that, that launches with that grand opening so that we can tackle the wallpaper. I think that there was no signage plan for the house, so I think if, you know, the museum opens as a museum, it's going to need signage that, that is applicable and, and fits with the house. I think that'll be part of it. And the other thing that I am really concerned about, but I think maybe the Friends Group can play a part in, is all of the items that are in storage. There is a huge, well, I don't know if it's huge. If you moved it, it was huge. There is a collection that belongs to the house of furniture and various other things, some of which is probably not worth keeping and some of it maybe, so that's a process that we have to kind of work on a plan for too. But what, I guess my question for Scott is, right now, do you have any thoughts in terms of a timeframe for a grand opening? And then the other thing is, speaking from myself as personally, but also I assume from some of the viewpoints of the Friends Group, that we don't necessarily see the wallpaper being done a key element to getting people in the house. So, you know, what do, what do you see from the Parks Department's standpoint has to be done that needs to be tackled before people can start walking in that front door? Because I think the, I think that the, the good thing about opening the house in the state that it is, even if we put some furniture into it, will help us make the argument for getting sponsorships for doing rooms or, or, you know, kind of pushing that fundraising piece forward.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's all really good feedback.
So, there is a question somewhere, right?
Yeah, there is. And so, what I would see, what I would see is the answer to your question, Commissioner Smith, is what absolutely needs to be done is, we need to finish the project, which we're, like I said, we're, we're just punch listing those items, getting them, getting them wrapped up. There needs to be at least some limited furnishing plan in place and just probably some limited display in place to, you know, have something there. I have no reservation about having the house shown without the wallpaper. I think it actually is, is pretty cool. It shows the, kind of the bare bones of what the building is, and it also gives us the ability then to, to do some of that fundraising, get some energy behind that. So, the timeline question that you also asked, I think that's in progress in terms of, we're, we've been so focused on getting the project wrapped up, but now we're really starting to move, this, this is kind of a jump-off point discussion for us tonight as far as, are you comfortable with the general recommendations that are in this strategic plan? Can we move forward on those things? And I think then we, we begin the process of doing the grand opening. But I also, I very much agree with your earlier point that you said, we don't want to rush into the grand opening and do it when we're not prepared. So, we want to make sure that we're taking the careful steps, but on the other hand, we don't want to wait too long so that we lose the energy and the momentum. So, in the coming months, yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll be working more in informing the commission about what our intents are there.
So, there's a couple of things that we have to talk about timeframe-wise, and that is, is that Tim Hall from Coin Toss Brewing is going to do a special beer for the event. And so, there is a, a window there that, you know, he, he doesn't just do that in two days. And then, I've had discussions with Mayor Charlie Hale's city of Portland, and is willing, he's willing to come out and recreate the coin toss with me, but as.
Is he willing to come out with a check? That's the question we really need to know.
Right.
No.
Well, then we'll have to talk about it.
But, but what that brings us is a whole lot of exposure.
Right. Absolutely. No, I think that's part of the kickoff to that.
And my point, and my point being is, is that his schedule is hard to get in. So, we need to be working with both Mayor Hale's staff and with Tim to find out when, you know, how, what, what kind of timeframe, what kind of lead time they need.
Understood, yep.
Carol, did you have anything?
Yes, I do. Great job on this. I'm very excited that it's near completion. It's been a long process, almost four years, is that right?
Some would say 24.
But I, I think it, it took a long time because it was done right.
Yeah.
And I think the strategic plan gives us the framework to do the next phase right, which is to get a good management plan for it. I do think the nonprofit partnership and the Friends Group, it sounds like there's a lot of potential there. So, I urge you guys to come back soon and let us know what your thoughts are on it. The grand opening, I think, would be a great platform for fundraising. How about paying a certain amount of money to vote for the wallpaper? Maybe have three different types of wallpaper that you can vote for, and that's a way of getting the fundraising to pay for the wallpaper and different things like that. But I think really getting the community involved and having some fun things would, would be a great way to unveil the, the new old Erma Tinger House.
Veronica?
I had a couple of thoughts. It sounds like there's no furniture, but people have antique furniture that they might like to lend to the house, at least for the open house or until there's a final furnishing plan, so that when you do open, it's not a vacant house. And that's, people might like that and appreciate the recognition that they would get for that. The second thing is on, in terms of the larger scale maintenance, it seems like it would be a perfect grant application for the metro enhancement grant. If there's a roof replacement or something major, it seems like that would be a logical funding source. The ongoing, you know, making sure the lights are working, that probably should be the city's responsibility, but the major improvements seem like would be a good candidate for that source of money, especially since there's more money to be had. That's it.
There, there is furniture for the house. It's just, it has to be gone through. I mean, any other furniture and donations that would come forward, I think would be appreciated too if it fit the style of the house, but.
So.
I just want to thank you. I appreciate this plan. I think it's, you know, it puts us in a good place and it's, it's really appreciated the time that was spent on it and, and reporting to us tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Pauling?
Yeah, I had a real quick question for Scott. Was the furniture, was that done in part of the original assessment when the history and the materials and stuff, the paint samples and the different types of things were done for the house? Or was the furniture had been, had been talked about? It wasn't, was it?
Not, not extensively. You want to, you want to take a shot at that, Matt?
Yeah, so, as part of the rehabilitation, eminent architect and historian Bill Hawkins was part of our team and wasn't really part of the rehabilitation, but he took it on himself to talk to some of the people at Fort Vancouver and learn a little bit more about what they have. The challenge with the house is that the national register, like the official period of significance for the house is really the 1840s and 1850s, a period from which unfortunately there are very few artifacts that are tied to the house, if any. Now, that said, Fort Vancouver certainly has some items of that era. They aren't necessarily associated with the house directly. So, it wasn't part of the rehab, so we didn't go too far down the road, but, but Bill did do a sort of preliminary look at what it would look like to outfit the entire house with period furnishing. I think it's unlikely that that would be taken on, like outfitting the entire house from that period would be fairly financially ambitious unless, I mean, I know Bill has some things to lend, some other people have mentioned it, depending on how many people have stuff that they want to sort of put on consignment at Erma Tinger House. I think what we talked about in the report is that there would necessarily still be some Victorian-era representation of the house, which isn't a bad thing, because it was still very important to the city of Oregon City. It's just that that period isn't sort of statewide significance necessarily.
Okay, but the furniture that was there has been inventoried and you haven't liked it, okay.
It's, yeah, it's in, and it's in storage.
And who owns that?
Well, that's, there's, that's what we need to sort out.
It depends, right?
There's some discussion about that, and we'll, we'll get that all sorted out.
Okay.
But it's all in safe storage. That was done when we originally kind of closed the house down and, yeah, so.
Okay. So, last thing is, I know there's a bunch of you folks out there, so if you could pick one person to come up and kind of give me a three or four-minute overview about what you're doing, we normally don't take citizen comment, but given that, you know, you've been so interactive with this whole process, I'd like to give you the opportunity, if you can pick one person.
Yeah, give us a report, what's going on. Welcome, thanks for coming, everybody.
Yes, we, this was an important meeting for us. After spending some time with Matt and discussions.
So, before we get too far, can you identify yourself for the?
I'm Rala Harding.
Thank you.
And I'm the Chair of the Friends Organization for the Erma Tinger House. At this point, we are fine-tuning our bylaws. We are recognized by the IRS and, and registered the name with the state of Oregon. We have a bank account and it has some money in it. We're in the process of working on our 501(c)(3). We're getting some voluntary help, legal help in that regard. We are in the process of perfecting our presentation for you. So, we have been busy and we're committed to this project. As you know, all the people that are behind me are very intense in, in their love for that property and recognizing the importance of that property to the state of Oregon, to the Northwest and to the territory of the Oregon Territory, actually. So, we feel comfortable in the start that we have and, and the intensity that enthusiasm that's still there of working forward. So, we have a board, we have officers, so we have established a foundation and are moving forward.
I have a question.
Can I answer any question?
I do have a question. So, just asking the Friends Group, is it your preference to eventually have the house be under National Park Service ownership?
I've worked with the National Park Service. I am a past president of the MMA, so I have worked closely with the people there. I, I think in the long term, definitely the preservation of the house should be in their possession, yes. And, and we were around initially when that was in the works, but things didn't come together the way I know the Park Service wanted it to happen, so. But I think in the long term, definitely, that's going to be the salvation of the house. But I would like to thank the city for the tremendous amount of work you've done. We, of course, Marge and I were there for 20 years and working our programs there and telling people about the house and, and noticing what was going on with the house until we made a phone call and I think it was Scott that told us, "Get out of the house now." And we did. And it, but we are so pleased and your gracious response and, and your willingness to spend the dollars that needed to be spent to, to restore the house is, is, we're very, very thankful to the city for that.
Carol, do you have something?
Nope, it disappeared. I was just, that's wonderful. Thanks for the report.
So, thank, thank you. And let me also say that without Commissioner Smith, it probably wouldn't have happened because he was writing this thing like a rented meal.
Let me tell you about Mr. Smith. I remember him as a high school student, being part of a living history, quite a bit of our living history in the early days was involving Rocky. And, and his commitment at that time. And his commitment at that time was, well, it hasn't modified at all. It's still very strong. And yes, we do appreciate what he's done in working with the city and will continue. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one kind of closing comment?
No.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. First, I just want to thank, well, thanks to all the Friends and the supporters. And then I do want to thank Matt Davis for the really good work that he did. This was a very small consultant contract and I think we got a very, a good value out of that. So I thank him for his excellent work. He really did a fine job. And then lastly, I just want to sort of confirm my direction here is we will take this recommendations within the strategic plan and begin to work through those. We'll work with our supporters and the folks that are already forming the Friends Group. We'll be working through the other things, the big picture. We're going to continue to pursue with the partnership we already have with the Park Service. So just wanted to make it clear and that that's the direction from the Commission that we're going to just begin to implement or explore the recommendations here and then, of course, report back and we'll be discussing those as we move along.
Okay.
If we're good with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
So if you guys don't want to stick around for the rest of our scintillating meeting, this would be a good chance for you to leave. Well, I'm just giving you the opportunity, I'm not kicking you out. All right. Staff will remain seated.
Your report's coming up.
Okay, so next thing on the agenda is PC 15-192, draft amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. The Citizen Involvement Committee staff is Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. At the retreat goal-setting this January, one of the discussion points was working with the Citizen Involvement Committee to look at ways to restructure and work with that group to make it more efficient. Ms. Turway has really been the lead planner, working with the CIC, migrating their bylaws that they had spent significant time on and turning that into a code that can be incorporated into the Oregon City Municipal Code consistent with other committees that we have throughout the city. During those discussions, there were some goals that the Commission had presented to staff as we discussed with the CIC on what form it would take, how it would operate, how it would vote and whatnot. I believe we accomplished several of those goals. This was voted and passed out of the CIC in the form that's before you today. And we provided you both a clean version, the redlined version, as well as the original bylaws that the CIC had created themselves before we started this process back in January. So with that, I believe we've had several successful meetings with them once we were able to get past the writing of the actual code itself. We did bring this back at a work session before the Commission a couple of months ago. There have been very minor changes as the attorneys reviewed this. We thought we were going to have to go to the Land Conservation and Development Commission for approval of this. As we discussed that with the Department of Land Conservation and Development staff, it was determined that we did not need to take it to them since we were just essentially taking bylaws, rewriting those and applying, implementing them through our municipal code. We weren't doing away with the CIC, which many jurisdictions have been doing in providing that authority to either the Planning Commission or the City Commission themselves. So with that, based on the comments tonight, we would be bringing this forward in ordinance for adoption in the near future for the Commission's consideration. So both Ms. Turway and I are here to answer any questions that you may have concerning the proposed draft in front of you.
I have a question because I don't remember anybody talking to me about, about the mayor not appointing these representatives.
The code language does, so Laura Turway, Planner at the City, the code language reflects that each neighborhood association would nominate a primary and an alternate member, and then the mayor would appoint those positions.
Or not, at which point they would recommend two more.
But in the, the redline bylaws, it doesn't say that.
So that's a good point of clarification. The proposed code amendment, Chapter 2.30, would replace the bylaws. So the bylaws that the CIC had worked on would be completely removed.
The bylaws were kind of a base because they had spent quite a bit of time writing their own bylaws.
Right, okay.
So the actual, Chapter 2.3 is what is going to be codified. And in Section 2.3003OB, "Each neighborhood association shall provide a primary and alternative member nomination for appointment by the mayor. Each primary and alternate member appointed shall have first been nominated by the neighborhood association for which they represent." So essentially, the neighborhood associations choose who they like, make a recommendation of the mayor, and the mayor either upvotes or downvotes it.
Okay. And the, the folks on the CIC now are happy with this? Is this a consensus? Was this a split vote?
It was a split vote. Seven, six, two.
Well, I wouldn't call that a consensus.
And then since, after the vote, we sent the code language to our lawyers to review once again, and there were some minor edits. We sent those edits back to the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary of the CIC as well.
And have they responded?
We did not, yes, there was some communication back and forth and we did not. Everything was fine.
Okay.
So you're saying that after these changes, there is now support for, general support for these changes?
No.
We've not taken it back to the entire CIC. As you can see, the edits are very minor, just clarifying language through our lawyer. There's no large.
The intent is the same, in my opinion, that the edits that the attorney made, don't see a reason to take it back to the CIC at this point. Their main issues have been included or addressed or not addressed in some instances. I do not believe going back, I don't think you're going to reach consensus at this point with some, with some of the members on the CIC.
Since I'm new to this, can you tell me what the main bone of contention is?
That the CIC, some members of the CIC would like to operate as an individual organization separate from the city.
And not staffed by the city and?
And not being.
Well, no, they wanted, they wanted city staff, they wanted the TV, but they didn't want to have any, any umbrella as far as the city being the organization. Maybe you can be clearer on that than I can do.
Well, the distinction would be that our neighborhood associations are not instrumentalities of the city. They are truly separate assemblies of people. The CIC is an instrumentality of the city, like the Planning Commission or one of your other registered committees. And because of that, they're, they have the authority to make liabilities, create liabilities for us and themselves. And also they have certain privileges and responsibilities that come with being an instrumentality of the city. And that includes for, for you, the responsibility to have bylaws in place that you approve of. And so it's kind of hard to have it both ways. You can be truly independent than you really are, but it's hard to be an instrumentality and act like you're not.
I think, I think part of this too is returning to the original purpose of the CIC, which was based around land use, education, and involvement. And, you know, it's great, it's expanded and it grew into more of a social, more of a, it took on many more roles. And so the idea here was to try to get it back to its original intent because land use is so significant and important and impacts neighborhoods and that involvement and education is necessary. And so there was some, there was some disagreement about the extent of the responsibility and roles of the CIC.
And I also think that there was a, what is, the evolution sort of morphed into, they kind of, some people on the CIC felt like they could legislate like the City Commission can. And they were trying to take on issues and then force the Commission to take on issues. And, you know, being that they're not elected, that really, we felt like that really wasn't their role.
Yes, trying to be government. So how, what was the process to get back around to the original bylaws with just the changes?
What was the process?
Yeah, well, I imagine it was challenging because probably the people that wanted, that wrote the, you know, other bylaws, their own bylaws, wanted it to be separate from the city.
So we took, we took, we took the bylaws, we took some of the language. We added additional language that would make it consistent with other Planning Commission, Historic Review Board, Natural Resource Committee, wrote up a draft, presented that. Four meetings?
We had a total of five meetings and we got approval at the fifth.
And so taking their comments, their concerns, working through line by line until we have what's before you today.
I think you've done a good job. I think it's good to stay true to what it was originally formed for with maybe just some, you know, minor additions that bring it up to what people can agree upon.
Well, and we would be remiss in not thanking Commissioner Shaw for his Job-like patience in this process. So thank you, Brian, for all the work you did on this.
I did have a question about the nature of the kinds of grievances that might come before this committee. Are we talking about someone not mowing their lawn or?
Yeah, I think the last grievance in Kanema Neighborhood Association had to deal with how the election was run, how the noticing happened. So as it relates to the neighborhood association business, it's not a code enforcement or a CCNR enforcement. It's if there's an issue in the neighborhood association business.
And in my view, they did a really good job, actually, with a complicated scenario down there, listening and investigating and, I mean, really, really worked hard at it and then I think came to a fair conclusion about how to resolve the conflict.
So the other thing I wanted to say is, because when I first came here, this was a mess and we were this close to just getting rid of it because it was costing the city money. It was really dysfunctional. And so for us to, for Tony especially, to have been able to work through this and get us to someplace where at least everybody isn't unhappy, I think is truly amazing. So, you know, David likes to say, if somebody's not shooting at you, you're not doing a good job. So, you know, we're never going to have everybody be happy with us. What was that? That actually was a police saying. But I guess he was a detective, so.
That was a different time.
Yeah. So anything, I think this horse is dead. Anybody have anything else on this? All right, then we're going to move on to Mr. Conkle and a update on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. This is not the same presentation we've seen 17 times already, right? Oh, okay.
Something less contentious than the last subject.
The parts you've seen before, I guess you're less worried about.
Well, you're not Mr. Lewis, anyway.
Once again, evening.
You'll learn.
Evening Mayors and Commissioners. So tonight, I'd like to make a presentation, give you an update on where we're at in the project. There are multiple moving parts to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project currently being managed in multiple jurisdictions and agencies as we move this forward. I'd also like to talk a little bit about the contract with Eco Northwest. You'll be being contacted by them in the near future, soliciting input as we continue to work towards, look at local funding options for infrastructure on the property. Have a brief discussion about some decisions that are going to have to be made in the near future concerning the governance and ownership of the Riverwalk and how we're going to proceed as we make this next step into the Riverwalk design and engineering. And then talk a little bit to, at the end, about the Willamette Falls Legacy Project organizational structure that we're using as the staff with these multiple jurisdictions. So with that, I'd like to introduce Catherine Kryger. She is with the RISE team, Regional Investment and Significant.
Regional Infrastructure Supporting Our Economy.
Supporting our.
I know, we're really good at acronyms.
With Metro. And she's been brought in as the project manager for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project itself, trying to make sure that we can manage the multiple facets of this project in a cohesive way that reduces redundancy and errors and making sure that we're considering the impacts on the entirety of the project as we make decisions either on the private property, the infrastructure, or the Riverwalk itself. So Catherine's been a great asset for us on this project, as well as the investment from Metro's made in the project to dedicate a person to represent the project itself. There are other members of the team that represent Metro's position, but she is dedicated on our behalf, on Metro's behalf, and all the other partners on wrangling this thing over the next two years, at least.
Yeah, I hope so.
So I'm going to go ahead and just kick off in the presentation. Catherine's going to help me a little bit with this as we move through this. So you guys are well aware that we have actually three significant projects going on right now in the near vicinity. We have the Willamette Falls locks right across the river and the goal there to reopen that facility by the One River Coalition. We have the Willamette Falls Heritage Area, trying to get designated a National Heritage Area, really showcasing the historical story that we have to tell in this area from Shempui all the way up to Lake Oswego. And then obviously, we have our project here with the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. You're well aware of the location of the site, but as we continue to work on this property, we really have started to think about not only what the impact is for the property, but really starting to think about what are those impacts that are going to be caused by this? What are the economic impacts on the bluff through downtown to the Bolton area and continuing on to other areas? Because we really do believe that the tourism and the economic benefit here is going to be significant, not only on the site, but all throughout the area.
So that's an old picture, right? Eighties?
Oh, I don't have it.
Because if you look at the power, the powerhouse is still there.
Oh, yeah, it's still up at that point.
Still there, yeah. Oh, my gosh.
Good eye.
You're well aware of the four partners. We'll talk a little bit about the partnership so far. We've been able to keep this partnership intact, which, in my opinion, has been part of the reason for our success and speed at which we've been able to move forward and make progress on this property and this project. So it's been since February 2011. And sometimes I think about that and it's like, wow, it's been a long time. Another time, it's like, I can't believe it's been four and a half years. But it's, sometimes it's also good to just think about what we've accomplished in that time period. We began with the bankruptcy in February. We moved into preliminary investigations and partnering with Metro, trying to get an understanding of what is this site? What is on this property? And how do we start to catalog the environmental or the historical resources that are on this property? We then moved into the strategic due diligence. We started with environmental assessments, environmental Phase 1 and Phase 2 in cooperation with Department of Environmental Quality, trying to put a number on what the environmental cleanup on the property is. A boundary survey, an appraisal, title search, investigation of the structural site, historic significance of the structures on the site. Really broke that site down, as you recall, into about 58 different buildings and structures. When were they built? What were they built from? How could they be reused? And really trying to filter out what's on the property, what's not. Then we moved into the Framework Master Plan. For such a complicated project, which was done with all of our partners based around the four values, economic impact, healthy habitat, public access, and historical and cultural interpretation, which really were the guiding values throughout that, that process. And they were really supported by the community and there was a great deal of buy-in with that. That project was done with the cooperation of the bankruptcy trustee, our partners, and a grant from Metro through the Construction Excise Tax Program. And it led to a rezoning of the property, a multimodal mixed-use designation for downtown, a negotiation with ODOT and the transportation improvements, all of these knocking down the existing and perceived barriers for private investment back in that property. It also led to the identification and beginning of champions, citizens who just wanted to be involved in this project because it was so intriguing, it was so interesting. It was such an opportunity that they really wanted to see, not only in the community of Oregon City, but throughout Clackamas County, the region, and the state. In 2014, we move into the private owner site acquisition. Mr. Kryger purchased it in May, signed the land use application, supports the four values. The governors signed off on the financial plan, which we received the $5 million from the state. We received $5 million. the $5 million from the state, we received $5 million through Metro's open space grant program. Metro was able to negotiate easements with Portland General Electric as well as the property owner. And with the property owner's easement came 120-foot easement across the entirety of the project, $900,000 towards the design and engineering, as well as 20% of the long-term operation and maintenance for the site.
Well, let's be clear, that was not just Metro, that was you as well.
I was, I was a part of it, but Metro, uh, Ms. Hillary Wilton has been our chief negotiator in contact with, with Mr. Heidgurken, and she negotiated, um, very well on behalf of the partners.
Well, I just don't want you to downplay your role in that.
Well, exactly, and that's an amazing amount of work to be done. You said he purchased it in May? That is amazing. It's not that long ago.
Yep. Thank you. Um, then we move into the land use and planning. We talked, uh, you know, the four values, once again, I think these have been integral in moving this forward and we've just been reminding folks, and one's not more important than the other. You do one well, it makes the other three that much more better. Um, out of that, we signed an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the partners. Oregon City took on the responsibility of the operation, maintenance, long-term care of the Riverwalk. Metro discussed, negotiated the easement, um, took the lead on identifying of, of the potential for a formation of a friends group. Clackamas County, they've supplied a federal lobbyist in Washington DC to assist us with federal grant opportunities and funding that is available, um, at the federal level. And the state of Oregon has taken the lead on the process for tribal involvement as we move through this Riverwalk. Um, they have the, the appropriate level, um, for those interactions as well as the relationships with the many tribes throughout the region to make sure that that story is incorporated upfront and thought through, um, and it's not an afterthought after all the work's been done on the design of this facility.
So, have, have there been any fruits of the, uh, the labors of the lobbyist in Washington DC? Have we seen any money from the feds yet?
We have not seen money, but we've had access to multiple federal agencies, as well as the support of our federal delegation. Um, their chief of staff or Senator, um, D-D-D-Widen, um, was out, but it also included, um, multiple federal agencies that could play a role in certain, um, in certain times of this development, whether it be, um, you know, cleanup of asbestos, moving into infrastructure investment, moving into housing opportunities, moving into economic development in terms of bringing, uh, jobs to the site. So, you could see this, there's these, where you could insert these federal agencies at certain points in the timeline where they would be accessible to us.
And our representative Schrader's, um, staff has been involved in most of these meetings, too, so I just want to credit them.
Yep. Um, so where are we now? We have just, uh, you're well aware, we, we sent out a national search for, um, firms to lead the Riverwalk design and engineering. We received 14 applications, we narrowed it down to three for interviews, and we chose one. Mayor Reed, Snowhead and Dialogue to lead that. We're currently in the contract negotiations with them. We were also successfully able to lobby, uh, the state legislature for an initial $7.5 million on top of the $5 million that they've already put into this project. Um, we've identified a 1.5 million budget for the design for a $10 million Riverwalk, um, to be constructed, um, over an 18-month, 24-month period before we move into the construction of the project. So, as we move through design and engineering, through that public engagement, rolling into construction, uh, is the goal, uh, at this point.
You said 1.5 for a $10 million?
Point.
Actually, uh, so, he, he, we just got the 7.4 that Tony mentioned, so we actually have 17.4 million dollars for the first phase of the Riverwalk. The, the budget is about 1.5, a little bit less. It also includes a lot of the scientific work that we're doing at Metro around the river and flooding and the floodplain and habitat and restoration.
Was, that, that wasn't my question.
Oh, sorry.
My question was the second half of that. So, you're saying you, of the, the $10 million that we already have.
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the 7.5 is coming in the 2017 biennium for, uh, phase two construction? Is that the idea?
I, I, I think that through this, through this design and engineering, we're going to have a better idea of the phases.
Okay.
And what each phase is going to cost. So, the, as we've been doing all this work, we've assumed we've had $10 million. And now, as of, you know, July 1, we had an additional $7.5 million, and so that will be worked in as we go through this process over the next 18 months of when that's spent, how that's spent, where that's spent.
So, is it being, um, is it being designed in phases or in the entirety and then broken down into phases?
So, yes, it's going to be designed in the entirety.
Okay.
To the extent we can.
Right.
And then it'll be broken down into at least two phases because, and I, I'm quite sure that we're not going to leave any money on the table. So, uh, the first phase will include some access to the falls and an interim access to wherever the actual construction is, new construction.
So, the budget is still the same for the 1.5 for the planning?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's for the schematic design piece, and then there'll be design development and engineering and permitting and construction.
So, of the 17 million, is any of that targeted toward construction or is it all of it in the advanced work leading up to that?
Definitely targeted toward the first phase of construction. Not all of it, but most of it.
So, we'll continue to, you know, utilize, uh, our asset, um, with Summit Strategies, um, the federal lobbyists that we've, we've been utilizing, um, we'll be, continue to pursuing grants, uh, to, to, to supplement the, the funds that we have. Um, and then we have multiple other contracts that we're currently running concurrently with this that are helping to inform, um, the design and engineering process, whether it be habitat, hydrology, um, we have multiple, um, projects going on right now that we want it done in place, uh, so that the, the consultants would have that information ready to go when they started. Um, here's some of the pictures, uh, some of the work. Um, Mayor Reed, Snowhead and Dialogue, um, that, uh, as they were the successful, they were very excited. We're currently negotiating, uh, the contract with them for the work, uh, coming up. We're going to touch back on this and, and these next three slides deal with, um, what we kind of refer to as buckets. And when we get to the organizational structure, I'll explain that a little bit. But in terms of the infrastructure, we hired Eco Northwest to really start looking at what the local options are for funding infrastructure on the project. We don't know, but we, we, we imagine there's going to be a gap between what the private side can, can pay for and what the public side. And there's, and now we're talking on the private property. And so, what we've asked Eco Northwest to do is look at the funding options that are available to local jurisdictions to kind of rank them, um, based on several factors, um, why we would do something, why we would not choose one, why we would choose another one. Also, look at some similar, um, what all the local jurisdictions have done as similar, um, demonstrations of options that we may have available to us should we so choose. You know, realistic, you know, there was 20-some options, and really, it's narrowing it down to what are the three, four that make sense for Oregon City that then we spend our efforts trying to get ready for when we do need to make these decisions on how do we provide some of this infrastructure funding on the private property should it be necessary? Um, when we talk about the, the economic development, we applied for a, um, what used to be the construction excise tax, which is now the Community Planning and Development Grant, uh, through Metro. We hope to hear about that probably in the next month or so. Um, that included a, a $450,000 match from the property owner, uh, money from Clackamas County, Oregon City, and then the grant, and it would just be a little bit over $1 million. And the goal here is to really look at what are the infrastructure requirements, refine those infrastructure needs on the site, and look at what the, the opportunities on it for economic development are, market study, economic development impact, um, essentially a development opportunity study, really, really diving into and refining what we were able to do at the framework level so that we are able to start identifying what are the infrastructure needs? How much are they going to cost? And, and what are we really looking at in terms of what we need to bring as local jurisdictions or find other ways to fund in order to accomplish the project that we're all envisioning at this point? Um, and so, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine here to talk a little bit about.
So, these are our buckets. Um, the Riverwalk is the one that I think has come the furthest in a really short period of time, and we probably know the most about that. Um, on the other side is the development, that's what the, the private, um, investors are going to bring to the site. Hopefully, it's, um, a new tenant, like, you know, Intel wants to do a research facility there or something like that, but it, the goal with the development site, obviously, is to bring jobs and vitality to the site. Um, and it's, it's primarily a private endeavor, whereas that, the Riverwalk is primarily a public endeavor. And then the infrastructure is the piece in the middle, it's where they both meet. Um, and so, uh, so the goal in the infrastructure is to, uh, make sure that we're really smart about the infrastructure that goes in, so it's shared, what can be shared will be shared with the private world. Uh, for example, you know, utility lines, water, um, to the extent, you know, parking could be shared, you know, even temporary parking, um, we're going to take a look at that, uh, it's part of the scope of the, uh, Community Planning and Development Grant. And so, um, so the, the goal in the middle is to make sure that we're, uh, that the private, uh, investment and the public investment moves together as much as it can and that then the, whatever we share, we understand, you know, who, what, what benefit, that we share benefits and that we are efficient with our, our investment. So, we want to use our money wisely and, uh, we don't want to have to tear anything out down the road. So, uh, this is, uh, the funding challenges. So, the good news was we now have the 17.4 million for the, uh, for the Riverwalk. Uh, the, the grant is a little over a million. Uh, we're hopeful that, that Oregon City will get that grant. Um, and, um, but the challenges are, the, the previous study, uh, said that, stated that the Riverwalk would be about 35 million. Some people have even said that might be low. We just, these are really rough numbers, but we're really trying to wrap our arms around what it could be, and that's why with the project will be done in phases, and that's why we're not going to leave any money on the table. So, and then the infrastructure piece, um, is even more, even more, needs more investment. And, uh, with the Riverwalk, it's 80 to 100 million approximately. Without it, it's, you know, 45 to 65 million dollars.
Okay, so I'm confused. So, so the 35 million is included in the 80 to 100 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, the 80 to 100 doesn't necessarily mean it's all public. There's obviously going to be private investment, but those were, these were the large number that we came up with earlier.
Sure, sure, because we got to get water, sewer, power, roads.
Roads, parking, utilities, all that stuff, yeah. And, um, and then, then there's a significant private investment that needs to be made on the site. Um, and like I said, we're trying to do these things, uh, hand in glove to the extent we can. We've got a good partner, uh, with George Heidgurken, and he actually, uh, recently hired a development firm out of Portland so we could have a local presence, make it easier for us to communicate, have meetings and...
Very recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, where we're going, um, is, uh, in 2017, we will have a schematic, schematic design, a phasing plan, which will also include a cost for the whole Riverwalk project. We'll also have a, um, uh, if we're, we're, um, successful, if Oregon City's successful with the CPD G grant, we would have a development plan and a refined master plan. I mean, what we really hope is that these two things can move together. It's, it would be perfect timing for that to happen. And, um, and then we're also pursuing, uh, federal, uh, grants. And one of the ideas behind the CPD G grant is that it would set us up and get us ready for federal grants because when, when, um, the Clackamas County lobbyist has gone back east, the question is, well, what is the development plan? You know, what is the, what is the, the, what do, what do you need to bring the jobs to the site? And so, um, so we think that that can get us set up for some good federal grants.
Tell them we need 100 million dollars.
Right. But we have to prove to them that we can bring those kind of jobs to the site. You know, the, so, anyway, so, um, so we're coordinating with them. Uh, Ron Widens is actually coming to the site, uh, not necessarily the site, but on August 27th, and we really do want to dive deeper into the Tiger Grant potential, uh, in the near future.
Catherine talked a little bit about this. It's, it's how can we leverage the amount of work that we've done and the investment that we have right now with these larger federal grants, um, that would have larger impact than just the site? You could look at a Tiger Grant for Phase 3 McLaughlin on 99E, filling the gaps that exist between the site and, let's say, Kanema Children's Park. Um, and so, really making sure, and, you know, we chuckled a little bit about, we don't want to put infrastructure in and have to rip it out later, but that is a concern when you have two projects working concurrently next to each other, and if that communication and integration isn't well thought through, that is a potential, or we put it in the wrong spot, right? And then making sure that we have a limited amount of resources available to us financially. And so, making sure when we make these decisions on phasing, location, what infrastructure to put in when, that it, that it's not only in the right spot, that it, but it also provides the biggest economic, um, benefit, uh, that we can and that it's a coordinated effort so that it's, it's not a waste of the limited funds that we have, which we've worked so hard to try to accumulate over the last four years. Um, so before I move on to kind of talk, to talking about some of the, the Eco Northwest study, the governance and the structure, are there any questions on the presentation so far? Okay. Can we switch over? Um, so just a quick update, Eco Northwest, we've been consulting with, uh, we have a draft that we've been reviewing internally. Um, like I said, we'll be, they will be contacting you as well, um, to hold informational and get some feedback from you, thoughts, uh, before we then, um, continue to refine that draft document, really focusing on, you know, an understanding of what the, um, funding options that are available to local jurisdictions like ourself are, and to start talking through, you know, why did you cross this one out or why is this one, you know, recommended to us or, or just questions that you may have so that you have that ability to have that, those conversations with staff and the consultant team as we're trying to prepare, um, opportunities that may be available to us or decisions that we're going to have to make in, in the future, uh, to help fund potentially, um, investment in this property. The third issue, uh, we were very successful, I talked a little bit about the Memorandum of Understanding, that really, it laid out the roles and it, and it empowered staff to go and be able to make decisions, whether it was on negotiation for the Riverwalk, working with the Native American tribes at the state level. It kind of, it was the agreement that held the partnership together and dedicated staff to certain roles and responsibilities, as well as gave us the ability to have confidence that we were implementing, uh, the desires of the partners as well as our own jurisdictions that we work for. So, we've now entered a new phase. Um, we have a capital construction project with significant amount of money, um, coming in, being spent across multiple agencies on, um, multiple contracts. Um, and through the partners meeting, so we have the partners group, which is two electeds and the chief administrator officer from each of the partners, we're going to be bringing back to them not only the organizational structure that I'm going to talk about, but also, um, the beginnings of an IGA for how we're going to manage this project and who's going to take on the roles and responsibilities. Um, one of those is going to be empowering Catherine, uh, to represent, um, the project on behalf of all the agencies and providing her that authority and that support, uh, that's necessary to manage, as you can see, a very complex and, uh, project. The other is going to be, um, a preliminary discussion at some point in the near future we're going to need to make a decision on concerning potential ownership options. We're building something and who are we building it for? Is it to Oregon City standards? Is it the State Park standard? Is it to some standard we don't know yet? Um, and really start thinking about, you know, how are we going to, um, how is this ownership going to play out in the future? And let's just say we come to a tie. Who gets the final say on who breaks the tie? If we can't, if we can't come to consensus with our partners, and it should be the ones who are taking on that long-term ownership and liability is certainly one option. So, those are going to be things that we're going to be bringing back that are going to need to be discussed and decisions are going to be made as we continue to move forward on this project. Um, so, obviously, no decisions here tonight, just, that is going to be a big one that, that we need to work through, um, as a partnership. And how do you make a decision that Group X or X and Y is, are the owners and get the, get the trump card on decisions, but yet still maintain the, the, the partnership? Because I do think it's been valuable and not disenfranchise those who are, are still committed to the project with the other agencies. Um, and then before you, I think, I, I handed... And then before you, I think I handed out as well as up on the screen is the Willamette Falls organizational structure. So this is how we internally as staff think about and have started to identify staff in decision-making on this project. If we start at the top, we obviously have the public partners, the two elected officials and the CEO from each of the partners. That's where we go back for larger policy discussion, larger decisions that need to be made. We then threw through Catherine as the project manager of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, overseeing and making sure that as decisions are made on economic development, they're thought about in the context of the infrastructure and the Riverwalk and vice versa, as well as, as Clackamas County, the state, Oregon City, Metro are spending money on this project. You know, one place to have that accounted for so when someone asks, so what's been spent on this? We, we have those that are available to us. When we were doing the visioning process, it was easy to think of this as one project, right? So we were looking at it in the entirety. And what we noticed was is we had funding for the Riverwalk and you had a private owner over here who was, who was kind of thinking about how he wanted, they kind of started to diverge. And we just can't, to the extent we can, we need to try to minimize that because it's so important that decisions we make on the private side impact the Riverwalk and what we do on the Riverwalk impacts the private side. And so the only way to really make sure that those decisions and the work product are being thought of comprehensively is to have an overall project manager representing the entirety of the partners on the project. And I think it's, I can't say enough for the willingness of the RISE team and Noah Siegel to dedicate someone to represent the partnership as a Metro staff person. Now, we then move into the Willamette Falls Technical Advisory Committee. This is mainly folks like myself, Noah, Bobby Lee, M.G. Deveraux, Gary Barth. You know, this is, this is, that, that step below the partners group, scopes of work, decisions being made on, if something can't be agreed to below, it comes up to the next level for that discussion and hopefully a consensus, we get to, get to a decision on how to move forward. And then we talked a little bit about the three categories. We've got the Riverwalk, the infrastructure and the economic development. Each of those will have their own project manager. Right now for the Riverwalk, it's Dave Elkin at Metro. And then underneath that, you have the consultant team and a working group. The consultant team, we've talked about who we've, we've selected as a consultant, and the working group is made up of experts from each of those organizations and agencies that meet specifically on Riverwalk. And then we will have, we have one for infrastructure through the CPDG grant, which will have experts on infrastructure. And then we will have the same on economic development. And so we will have these individual working groups focused on whichever bucket they're in and then bringing all that together through the TAC and the project manager to ensure that there is that cohesion in the decision-making as we move forward and a thought process to the impacts on the other parts of the project. And so really today, I just, I, one, I just, I want to introduce you to Catherine. I, I think that it's an amazing asset that has really helped with the project in trying to organize the larger project as a whole. And I didn't want the commission to be surprised in the IGA if you see, you know, Metro Project Manager as the lead on the Willamette Falls project and why is this or why, why is an Oregon City in the lead? We are involved as a partnership in all of these decisions. This is an organizational, this is a resource, this is a talent that's worked on multiple complex properties throughout the region and an asset. And so if there are concerns...
And it's not an FTE.
For Oregon City.
Yeah.
So if there are concerns about what you're hearing today, especially when in terms of the IGA, if, if it doesn't pop up tonight, if you do have them, please do forum to me so we can discuss them so there are no surprises as we move forward. Try to minimize those as much as we can. So with that, I'm done.
The only real concern I have is that while the Riverwalk design and so forth is moving on, I don't anticipate that the private development is going to move nearly as fast as the Riverwalk. So, you know, doing our best to try to maintain that connection is important. I just don't see that, I mean, there's, there's a, a ton of things that have to happen before anybody can even start really thinking about what's going to come out of the ground there. So, you know, I, I, I think it would be nice to be able to do that, but I don't, I, you know, I've done a lot of projects and I just don't see how, as fast as we're moving on the Riverwalk and as much stuff there is to do on the other side, both in infrastructure and in the, the, just the private development piece, I mean, just architecturally designing a building down there is going to take, you know, a year.
Right. And I think through the CPDG grant, and I agree with you, but through the CPDG grant, it's working on that development opportunity study, which doesn't just mean the end product. It means that there's a, there's a potential for transitional uses. Maybe it's something that comes in on a temporary basis that supports the Riverwalk that isn't a huge investment, but it creates activity, it creates some ability to recapture some investment in that property. And it's identifying these steps. Remember, this is going to be multiple, multiple steps and what you see here in three years isn't going to be there in 10 years.
Right.
It's going to be that constant transition. So how can we help identify those transitions as well as those end products with the private owner and continue to try to move us all along to the best ability as quickly as we can? But investing in what, what, you know, whether it's the infrastructure, we as an organization of Oregon City have, have an interest in the infrastructure, potentially we're going to own a lot of that. The economic development, we want jobs. When you look at retail, when you look at housing, you know, those are, those are, for a complicated site, nothing on this site's easy, but those are the easier ones. We want jobs. If this is so important to the region that we want living wage, family wage, traded sector jobs, then maybe we should be investing in what's the gap? What are the opportunities? What are the needs? What are the opportunities and bring those to them? And so you're right. I mean, are you going to get a brand-new building out there when we break ground for the Riverwalk? Probably not. But can we identify transitional uses that could activate the area until we get to that point would be the goal.
Okay.
Well, and I really like too how it's been separated into buckets and people are working on it simultaneously at the same time. It's not like we have to do the Riverwalk first and then work. So I think the coordination and still, you know, still working together and keeping abreast of everything, but also delegating to the different entities that, that can do that, I think that's great, so.
Would we anticipate some funding from the tribes as well?
You know, we can, we continue to, to work with philanthropic groups of, including the tribes on what those opportunities may be. You know, there's certainly cultural grants that are available. I mean, there's, there's, there's certain funding sources that, that maybe we could be competitive in. And so we continue to investigate those.
So Christina, your staff, planning staff is working on a cultural landscape report. And that's going to be the core of the interpretive plan. And I think that's, that'll be a jumping off point for a potential funding or fundraising.
Participation rate.
Yeah, right.
They actually just started yesterday an archaeological dig within the Woolen Mill, which is pretty exciting. So they'll have a two-week program going on out there.
Who, who is doing this?
I'm drawing a blank right at the moment. I could have kept my mouth shut and got away with it, but I apologize. Meyer, I will have to get back to you.
H.R.
H.R.A.?
H.D.R.
H.R.A.
I will get back to you with that. I apologize.
Okay. So it's a private company doing an archaeological dig on behalf of whom?
We, we worked with SHPO, received a grant. And then we were able to contract that out and set up a, an opportunity for an educational opportunity, but also to serve, you know, let's do a little pre-work on the site and...
Just taking it back down there and...
P.W. had fun. Yeah, lifted out some stuff. No, they cut the concrete for us and set it up for an appropriate dig with experts in the field.
Mr. Maggerberg, Mr. Smith?
My understanding on the several tours I've been through that Main Street is basically on stilts and so the infrastructure piece is going to be very complicated and expensive. And that's going to be critical to any future economic development that happens on the site, so it's, it's a challenge.
Dick Tressel's a better word than stilts.
We've got all of them. Anything else? Okay. So it sounded like we were comfortable with kind of how we're hoping to manage this project and having it out of Metro and great. And we'll talk more about governance.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the biggest question once again is, you know, when we get to that IGA point, how we structure that so that, you know, it's fair to everybody, but at the same time, you know, protects everybody equally as well. And while maintaining the fact that at the end of the day, this is happening in Oregon City. So it's going to be, you know, for the next 150, 200 years, that's going to be down there. Hopefully a long time longer than that, but I won't care because they'll be dead a long time. So the thing we have to worry about is making sure that we have enough control of the IGA, the site, whatever it is, to make sure that we're doing the absolute best possible thing there because we're only going to get a chance to do this one time. Okay?
Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Can you wake over there?
Been awake all night.
So does the city manager have anything to report?
Just one thing, and I know the commissioners are aware of this because I sent you an email this morning about it, the felling of trees on the library site. But I did want to say something about it because for the benefit of the public that might be watching or tuning in, that there are going to be several large trees on the Carnegie Library site that are felled throughout the week. Right now they're limbing up the higher limbs to make it safe where they can ultimately take them down. Some of those trees have Dutch elm and others just have to be removed and make room for the new building. But we do have an ambitious replanting plan and I reviewed that in detail with both Maureen and the landscape architect. And I, I'm convinced that the canopy that exists after the building goes up will be superior to the one that is there now. And I think that it may not be on the day we plan it, but it will, it will get there. And there will be some, also some pretty robust trees that go in and replacement. The bigger the trees are that you replace with, the higher mortality rate there is. So we have to be kind of cautious about, about that. But to the extent it's possible and reasonable, we're going to put in the biggest things that, that we can and few of the, on some of those sites. So just want to make sure I noted that, Mo, did I leave anything out? Okay. All right.
No questions, but I do have a, a, a short statement and that is, is that we were very careful to take a hard look at these things and then find a way to be able to utilize the wood that comes out of these things. So there is a plan in place, there's our folks, Interested Citizen, who is helping along with the contractor to make sure we take these things down in such a way as that we are able to keep as much of the wood by, or the wood product as we can to utilize in, in other places in the city, whether it's for conference tables and other things. And then some of this will be donated out to different artist groups to be able to utilize it for public art and those kinds of things. So we're not just hacking these things up and using them for firewood. And I think it's important to, that we want to maintain as much of this back into the community, given that those trees have been there so long. Just that we're going to find multiple different ways to utilize that wood so that it, it, it stays around, just like this gavel which was made from the...
Abernathy elm.
The Abernathy elm, which is down by the Abernathy Bridge. With that, that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the order? Then we're adjourned.